Good morning, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20 Michisoging territory and in the traditional territory of the Michisoging and Chipewa nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Could I have a mover in a second or two to adopt the agenda, please? Councillors Carter and Burton?
It be resolved that the June 12, 2024, Halliburton County Council agenda be approved.
All in favor? Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof? Hearing none. Could I have a mover in a second or two to adopt the minutes of May 22nd? Councillors Shell and Ryle?
Be resolved that minutes from the May 22, 2024, meeting of Halliburton County Council be adopted as circulated.
All in favor? That's carried. We have no business arising from previous meetings. So we'll move into our delegations, and the delegation we have today is Sarah Groves, Account Manager for MPAC. So welcome.
You get the volume off. It's gone off again. It's gone off.
Murray, if you could mute yourself. Good morning, and the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Sarah Groves, Account Manager at the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. Myself and my account support coordinator, who is here today with me, Victoria Anderlich, support the municipalities within the County of Halliburton, the County of Peterborough, and the cities of Peterborough and Coretta Lakes. Today, I want you to come away from this presentation with a greater understanding of the property tax and assessment system and know exactly where you can turn should you have any questions. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's start off with the four key players in Ontario's property assessment and taxation system, who each have a different role and interest in the process. The provincial government, specifically the Ministry of Finance, is responsible for setting assessment and taxation legislation as well as policies. They determine the education property tax rate as well. There's also an independent body that adjudicates MPAC's assessed values, commonly referred to as the ARB or the Assessment Review Board. And this also falls under the jurisdiction of the province. MPAC is a not-for-profit corporation funded by all Ontario municipalities, and our role is to accurately assess and classify more than 5.6 million properties across the province of Ontario. Our work is done in compliance with the Assessment Act and the regulations set by the provincial government or the Government of Ontario. We are accountable to the province, to municipalities, and to property owners and taxpayers of Ontario through a board of directors that is comprised of provincial, municipal, and taxpayer representatives, who are each appointed by the Minister of Finance. Then we have municipalities who determine budget requirements, set your tax rates, collect property taxes to pay for services, which you all know too well, probably. So your fire, your roads, recreation, water, among many others, obviously. You then use our assessments, our MPAC assessments, in order to distribute the tax requirement to property ratepayers. And finally, the property owners who pay the property tax bill help set market value through ongoing property purchases and sales. Next slide, please. So each and every day, we monitor the market and assess newly built and renovated properties in order to keep our property data current. We also periodically update every single property assessment in Ontario based on the same legislated valuation date. And we call this an assessment update or reassessment. Currently, the valuation date for the most recent assessment update is January 1, 2016. This is when we determine what every single property in Ontario could have reasonably sold for in its current state and condition at a particular point in time. Regular revaluation of properties ensures that assessments stay up to date, and similar properties of similar value in the same municipality pay similar taxes. Provincial legislation determines when MPAC can conduct a province-wide assessment update and sets the valuation date for the next update cycle. Next slide, please. So Ontario's property tax system is based on everyone paying their portion of what it costs to deliver community services. To do this, all properties are assigned a value at a common valuation date. And as mentioned on the previous slide, the valuation date for the most recent assessment update, which took effect in 2017, is the January 1, 2016 date. And this is called current value assessment. Current value assessment is market value as a point in time, which is the legislated valuation date. So it's the property a price might reasonably be expected to sell for if sold by a willing seller to a willing buyer after appropriate time and exposure on an open market. Regular revaluation of properties ensures that assessments stay up to date, and similar properties of similar value in the same municipality again pay similar taxes. Next slide, please. So as you can imagine, keeping Ontario's property database up to date is very important. Property data is continuously updated so that municipal records are accurate when our municipal stakeholders, like you, are making important tax decisions. Maintaining Ontario's property database includes inspecting and assessing new construction, additions, and renovations promptly. We respond to property owner inquiries and work to help them understand their property assessments. We also support municipalities by offering Municipal Connect, where our municipal stakeholders can obtain assessment-related information. We have ongoing conversations, we have regular engagements, and we work collaboratively on things like building permits and getting those digitalized and into our system quicker so that we can then realize that revenue quicker. We also process things like tax applications, severances and consolidations, as well as important statutory duties such as handling requests for reconsideration and maintaining people data by tracking school support for the 5.6 million properties across the province. Next slide, please. So let's talk briefly about valuation. There are three industry-wide standardized approaches to valuing properties in Ontario. The first of these is the direct comparison approach, which is primarily used for residential properties, condominiums, and vacant land. With this approach, we analyze sales of comparable properties that are sold for a similar or identical use as the property to be valued, and this provides an indication of the value. It's also important that we only use valid, open-market transactions in this analysis. Condos with services that are paid by the residents would be reflected in that sale price. And if a new condo owner decides to pay to be located at a specific condo development, even though they must pay for some of these services, we value that based on what that willing buyer is willing to pay that seller. Then there's the income approach, which is used for industrial malls, office buildings, shopping centers, and a variety of other property types. With income-producing properties, the ability to earn revenue is tied directly to the current value. So in order to value these properties, we need to determine how much revenue it could actually generate, as well as that sale price. So to clarify, it's not the revenue being generated by the occupant, but it's rather the rent that the occupant is paying to the landlord that we use to value on the income approach. With this approach, it does require a detailed analysis of income, expenses, both for the property being valued as well as other similar properties, and that determines how much income that property could be expected to generate if sold on the open market. Those two factors create a capitalization rate that help us determine the property's assessed value. So this method estimates the annual fair market income and other potential income that could be generated by that office building, deducts operating expenses, and then applies that capitalization rate to the income to arrive at what we call current value for the property. And then we have the cost approach, which is typically used for general-purpose industrial properties, small retail, and warehousing, just to name a few. This approach is used when a property type is unique and rarely sold on the open market, as we cannot rely on either the direct comparison approach or the income approach to determine its current value, just due to the lack of data. The cost approach is a three-step process, and first, we calculate the cost of replacing any buildings on the property, structures, or accessible fixtures on the land. Then we apply a deduction for all depreciation of those structures due to age, any functional or economic obsolescence or adjustments, and if there are conditions that may impact the value of that property outside of those conditions. Finally, we determine the value of that land, add it to the building calculations to produce an overall valuation. Sounds simple on paper. It's a little bit more complicated than those few steps. Next slide, please. So when we're looking at a residential property, and that's likely, well, it is what comprises the majority of the properties across the County of Halliburton, are residential. So when we're looking at the valuation of a residential home, although our analysis tool considers over 200 factors that come into play, these five factors actually determine approximately 85% of the typical value, so these have the greatest impact. So this includes lot dimension, location, square footage from the outside to your exterior, quality of construction to the home, and the age of the property, which may be adjusted depending on if there's been any major renovations or additions that have occurred. Next slide, please. So after we've assessed a property or changed an assessment, each property owner will receive a property assessment notice. And sometimes property owners don't agree with that notice or the assessed value that's been placed on their property. Then they might come to you and reach out, letting you know that they disagree. But it's important to remember that the property assessments do not equate to taxation. So if you get an inquiry, you can help us by helping them understand a few things and ask them maybe a few questions. So number one, if you could have sold their property on January 1, 2016, would that value that we have it assessed as make sense for a January 1, 2016 date? If they visit About My Property, or they haven't, I suggest they reach out and get their login information. We'll go through that in a little bit. About My Property is a huge resource for property owners. It's also commonly referred to as AMP because we know we use acronyms at MPAC. On there, they can also take a look at comparable properties to make sure whether their information makes sense and is accurate for details. If they disagree still after we've had these few questions, we've taken a look at About My Property, they can then file a request for reconsideration directly through About My Property, which is a free service. We'll review the data, make sure that what we have is accurate and whether it makes sense, and make an adjustment or not depending on what our findings are. Okay, and the next slide, please. So let's first spend a moment to address the relationship between property taxes and assessment. Assessment distributes taxes. It does not determine what the taxes are going to be paid. When a province-wide assessment update occurs, the most important factor is not how much the assessed value of a property has changed, but rather how the assessed value has changed relative to the average change in the class in that community. Next slide, please. So the next few slides are really going to showcase the supports that we have for property owners, the supports that we have for municipalities, and the supports that we have for you as council that can then in turn support property owners, understand the process a little bit. So our focus is always on building awareness about property assessment and taxation, and MPAC's role in that process. So we understand that property assessment can be complex, and we hear that from both municipalities, property owners, from you guys. And that's why we've been communicating more than ever with property owners and Ontarians to help them understand the property assessment and tax system, to learn more about who we are, and to easily find the information and resources that they need. So from social media campaigns to educational videos and our First Time Homeowners Hub that was just launched, where new property owners can access information to help them navigate the property assessment and taxation system. We continue to focus our efforts on providing helpful and easy-to-understand resources directly to the property owners and to municipalities in order to help answer property owner questions. Next slide, please. So I'm excited because there was a recent campaign that was launched called Insights, and this was launched at the end of February, so you may or may not have seen this on some of our social media posts. This campaign focused on the residential property landscape as it's evolved over the last decade, specifically with housing inventory. What we learned is that year-over-year price increases are driving buyers to look at communities further outside the Greater Toronto Horseshoe area, which we know. Communities with homes under $500,000 are becoming increasingly scarce, and the type and location of those homes of less than $750,000 has shifted. So what does this mean? There are limited options for first-time homebuyers. So in 2013, 74% of residential properties in Ontario had a home value estimate of less than $500,000, with 91% of homes with a value of less than $750,000. Today, that number has dropped to just 19% and 48%, respectively. So reasons for this drop in value in available homes under $500,000? Current home prices are a reflection of the various economic forces at play, and factors like supply and demand, increased construction and labor costs, plus inflation are all part of what's driving today's house prices. So to find properties for less than $500,000, potential buyers would need to look at cities like Sudbury, Sault Ste. Marie, North Bay, Thunder Bay, and Windsor. And while homes under $750,000 can be found in cities like Ottawa, London, Kitchener, Kingston, Barry, and the closest to us would be Peterborough. So we hope this data like this will help property owners understand the changing real estate landscape, where they can look to find housing opportunities throughout Ontario that may best suit what their future needs may be. You can visit and look at all of this information at a municipal level on the MPAC.ca website. There's a link on there that allows for the interactive housing map that you see pictured here, so you can specifically look at your own municipality and the area. Next slide, please. So to help new homeowners navigate property assessment, we launched the First Time Homeowners Hub in December, and it provides answers to some of the common questions that we receive. Over 713,000 property owners across Ontario received a property assessment notice in the fall. And for some of them, that was the very first time they'd ever seen anything to do with MPAC. For many new homeowners, that property assessment notice mailout would have been their first encounter with us, so we understand that there would be questions. To help address some of these common questions from new homeowners, this is why we launched the Homeowners Hub. So common themes on this hub include what is their property assessment notice and what it isn't, right on it, not a tax bill, the relationship between property assessment and taxation, what their 2016 value is, how we use sales to determine the value of their home. We talk about the building permit process and what to expect from the first property inspection, and even talks about school support and how they can change that as well. And that's all on that new homeowners hub. Next slide, please. So last year, you may remember that we had a myths and facts campaign, and this was really popular. It was a great resource, and it was in plain language. So it literally states like those two boxes in the middle there, "My property value has doubled. My property taxes will double." So that's a myth. When in fact, there's no one-to-one relationship between the change in your assessed value and the change in taxation. So this was a great campaign that we ran last year. We've also launched Your Home Values Matter campaign. There is a link on our website to that video that's shown here. For many homeowners, their property is their single biggest asset, and its value can have a significant impact on their lives. This campaign aims to help homeowners and prospective homeowners understand MPAC's role in the property market space. Next slide, please. So if we could watch this, please. So this video is all about how property tax is calculated and the relationship. I know I was out to each of the lower tiers either in late 2022 or early 2023. Some of us got to watch it, some of us didn't, so this will be a good opportunity. We'll all get a chance to watch it together. It can also be used as a link on any of your posts. You're welcome to share it. It's on our YouTube site for anybody to access.
Property taxes are based on your home's value. We might not know that an increase in your home's value doesn't necessarily mean your taxes will go up. To explain, let's take a look at how your property taxes are calculated. Imagine there's a town that only has three homes, and they're each worth a different amount. The total cost to provide all of the town's services is $1,200. This is collected through property taxes. Each homeowner pays property taxes based on their home's assessed value. So we take the total cost of services and divide it by the total property value. This tax rate is applied to all the houses to get enough money to pay the detailed services. Each homeowner pays according to the assessed value of their home, and every single year, the houses are being assessed. Let's say our three properties are put on an equally valued value. The total cost of services hasn't changed, but the total property value has increased. When this happens, there will be a decrease in the tax rate. Now, if you apply that new rate on all the homes, everyone still pays the same. Now, let's say another four years has gone by, and these homes are reassessed. During this time, the house on the right gains more market value than the other two. The total value of all the homes have increased, which means the town has to calculate the tax rate. With this new tax rate, the first two homes were valued and less than the home we need. Now it's reassessed at a higher value. Since the cost of services hasn't changed, the town doesn't need to collect more property taxes on the home. However, since property taxes are based on a home's value, taxes for each individual home could potentially go up or down based on the rest of the homes. So what happens when the cost to provide services goes up? Well, it means more property taxes need to be collected from every home that the new tax rate is calculated. To get the new rate, we take that amount that the town now needs and divide it by all of the property values. New rate is applied to all the homes, and now everyone has to pay a new tax amount to continue to fund the town's services. So let's review. One, property taxes are based on the assessed value of the home. If all assessments go up equally, everyone pays the same. Two, if all assessments do not go up equally, there's a redistribution of the tax. Three, if the town's cost to provide services increases, the municipality may choose to increase the tax rate. When this happens, everyone pays their share of that increase. That explains the relationship between property value and property taxes.
Perfect. Thank you. As he's shifting back to the slide deck, we previously talked about AMP or About My Property very briefly, and that next slide focuses on About My Property, which is the best tool to support property owners. And it's sometimes referred to as AMP, like I mentioned. For those unfamiliar, About My Property is a valuable tool that lets property owners easily review the information we have on file about their property. Once logged in, property owners can learn how their property was assessed, compare their property to other homes in the area, and if they disagree with their assessment, file a request for reconsideration. About My Property increases transparency and accessibility, empowering property owners with self-serve access to vital information. Users can view property information, valuation, sale information, site information, the information we have on their primary structures, other structures, and any locational influences that might impact that value. All published notices are available on About My Property dating back to 2012. So if you've sold your property since that time, your notices from prior to the sale date won't be visible to the new owner, so we do have that. But if you've owned your property back that far, your notices will be there. Allows the property owner and the customer to confirm or update their school support. So there is a slide on school support designation that we'll touch on in a moment. The methodology guides, the market valuation reports, and any market adjustments are also available for the property that you're logged in looking at as well. The Browse My Neighborhood allows users to navigate properties using the interactive map or an search function. And you can view up to 100 properties with what we call a snapshot. You can select favorites. You can create and view and download customized reports for those up to 24 properties. So you can look at property-specific information and save it for 24, or you can just view high-level information for 100. And then from the landing page on About My Property, as mentioned, property owners and tenants can update their school support directly from there, which is on the next slide. So in Q1 of 2023, we launched an online school support portal. Previously, it was only paper form on the application to direct school support or the ADSS application. This is an online mechanism for property owners as well as tenants to update their school support. MPAC is legislatively required to collect school support information and provide it in the assessment role to each municipality and school board. To support property owners in changing their school support designation, this online portal allows property owners or tenants registered with MPAC to designate their school support portal or their school support designation directly through this portal. By default, if you weren't aware, property owners and tenants in Ontario will automatically support the English Public School Board until such time that they change it. Property owners and tenants do have a little bit of a different path to take to update school support. So property owners can access and do this directly through the About My Property tool, as mentioned, through their login. And tenants will access a similar platform to what we used to use called voter lookup.ca. So very similar, but it's all online and easy to access. Once they've updated their school support, they'll get an email confirmation as well. So we have moved up in the technology world a little bit. Next slide, please. So we liaise with municipalities on a regular basis. We completed 839 engagements with council or one-to-one meetings with elected officials. We've attended 15 conferences so far in 2024 for municipal conferences. We're at AMCTO right now. Webinars, training videos, nearly 2,000 attendees took part in these webinars in 2023. And we have ongoing support for products and services, of course. Meeting with our municipal partners is crucial to building strong relationships and understanding the communities that we serve. MPAC staff work closely with municipal administration and municipal councils to educate and share valuable information. We participated in over 1,800 municipal engagements in 2023. And the top categories of our inquiries, which are like our day-to-day business requests, which we processed 18,000 of those last year, are things like property-specific inquiries, ownership corrections, zoning changes, planning bylaws, a role value question, that kind of thing, as well as mailing address corrections, and any questions surrounding a severance or consolidation or the plans associated with those. As an inquiry, it's not a negative thing. It's a business activity that is a touch point to deliver our core services to your municipality. And we monitor this activity as our municipal service level agreements. We do have measurables within that. So our digital toolkit available on the MPAC.ca can help municipalities, including elected officials, mitigate misinformation and provide support and resources to educate and inform property owners. We've had over 3,400-page views on these toolkits that are posted on our website to support the work, and there'll be more coming, and we're constantly updating all of these as well. Next slide, please. So a couple months ago, or in the recent past, you would have likely received information surrounding our municipal partnership report, the performance report, and the annual report. And these highlight our accountability and transparency as a public-facing organization, how well we are meeting our goals such as capturing new assessment, customer and stakeholder engagement, and operational efficiencies. They also highlight the many milestones we have achieved together over the year in our pursuit for excellence. We encourage you to read these reports that are found on MPAC.ca and/or they've been attached in some of your correspondence in your council meetings. So the last two slides, I don't ever hesitate to reach out to me. I've been to each of your councils at the lower tier. You should have my contact information. If not, it's shown here on the page there, that top one, as well as the contact information for my regional manager, Lynne Cunningham. So each municipality has a dedicated account management team should you have any questions related to the work we do or just anything in general about MPAC. Okay, and the last slide is just if there's any questions. I'm open to answering anything. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Sarah. Excellent presentation and recognizing that MPAC have put an awful lot of tools in place to help the public and everyone understand the process. My question would be, and I'm sure that it's on the minds of many of us, is given when the last general assessment was done, that assessment does not cover the cost of servicing in municipalities. that assessment does not cover the cost of servicing in municipalities. And, you know, I guess I know that it's not something that's within your control when the next general assessment is done. But is there anything that you can say, you know, related to that? When the next general assessment might take place?
Absolutely. So I do not have any information as to when the next general assessment update will occur. We are currently undergoing with the Province of Property Assessment and Taxation System Review. So that is ongoing. I would anticipate that we may hear something once that review is done, but at this point, we do not have a new valuation date. As far as new assessment and what we're adding, we've already added over fifty-five million dollars to the assessment roles within County of Halliburton to date this year, which equates to almost thirty-eight percent or about thirty-five percent of what we anticipate to pick up for the remainder of the year as well. So we are adding that new assessment to your roles and recognizing previous years as well. So even though we've added fifty-five to date this year, we've actually in fact added a hundred and eleven million dollars for this year plus the last couple of years as well for structures that have been completed in the last couple of years.
Questions from other members of council? Councillor Ryle?
Yeah, my question is related to new builds. Right now, I'm sure in all across Halliburton County and specifically in Highlands East, which is where I'm from, the total value of new builds is significantly higher. We're almost twice what we were at this point last year. So when a build is being done, it's being paid for in two thousand and twenty-four dollars at all levels, the property, the labor, the material. So at the end of the day, that is going to generate on the building permit often it asks cost of construction and/or market value on the building permit. You've just finished saying that we're based on a two thousand and sixteen value. And I'm getting questions from new home builders. How do they get their value that they've paid? Because in many cases, if you were to follow that formula, the cost of the build is more than in two thousand and twenty-four dollars is more than the two thousand and sixteen value of the property had it have been built in two thousand and sixteen. So when they get their MPAC assessment, how do you determine what new builds are actually going to be evaluated at?
Absolutely. Through you, Gordon. We time adjust all of that information. So we have calculations in the back just to make it kind of a close notes version. It does get complicated, but there are calculations done in the background that would estimate what that house would have been valued at as of January first, two thousand and sixteen. So if you take that house back those eight years, what it would have, what that value would be, and that's what their current value assessment is.
So basically, the information that's on the building permit, regardless of whether it's the market value or the cost value, is purely for the building department and is not used by MPAC as relation to estimating the value of the property for tax purposes.
So it's not just used by the municipality. All of that building permit information is ingested by MPAC and we're the only organization across the province that collects all of the permit information from municipalities. So not only do we use it to target our workload that we know we need to go out and pick up that new home in, say, six months to eight months to a year, whatever, however long it takes, but we also use that estimated construction, the type of work that's listed on that permit, to then estimate our new assessment forecast, which is estimating, like I said, that fifty-five million dollars that we've already picked up to date or that approximately thirty-eight percent that we forecasted to pick up for the County of Halliburton for the remainder of the year. So we do use those values to determine the quality of construction, sometimes the quantity of the homes that we're going to pick up, to then put that into that number to use for forecasting.
Questions, Councillor Carter? And then Councillor Ferry?
So the, I think you said five point four million homes in Ontario that you that you are tracking right now? Five point six, okay. Do you have an estimate of what percentage of those have not been done since two thousand and sixteen? So obviously of the five point six, there's been a lot of new construction and so on and so forth. But how many of the those five point six sort of existed in the at that two thousand and sixteen date and really haven't been updated since then?
So all properties would have had an update as of January first, two thousand and sixteen. So we have updated the values on them. Whether we have physically stepped foot on that property or done an inspection on that property is a different thing. Our inspections or a visit to a property or a change in valuation could be triggered by many things. It could be a request for reconsideration. It could be a municipal inquiry, could be a zoning change. It could be a property owner calling in concerned that there's a change in value. So I don't have an exact percentage of which ones haven't actually had a foot on the ground since the last valuation date. But all of the valuations have been updated to all reflect that same valuation date for equitable purposes.
You're good.
I guess, and you came to visit us about two years ago or so. So I'll make the same comment that I made then. My concern is whenever this day, this magic day comes, and I know it's outside of your control and the government will decide when the new values are used. You know, five point six million homeowners are going to get a number in the mail that may be significantly different than what they, you know, they had in their files. And I understand, and you know, I'm sure we can run the little clip over and over and over again, but people don't really understand that, you know, how their taxes and the valuations work. So there's going to be questions. I'm certain that there's going to be a significant number of people who say, wait a minute, that's not fair. And I don't think that we, as municipalities, should be the one who have to answer all those questions. Because you, really the government, is going to, you know, pick this date that they've delayed now much longer than they, than was planned. And we're going to have this complete turmoil in our property tax base. And so I think it should be upon you or the government to be setting up one eight hundred lines or whatever it is to answer and field all these questions. Because we in the municipalities do not have the staff to be answering thousands of questions from people who are saying, wait a minute, you know, my three hundred thousand dollar house you now say is worth seven hundred thousand. You know, so I, please take that back up the lines and say, you guys are going to need to help us at this, you know, momentous occasion because we don't have the resources to be able to handle it.
Thank you through you.
Go ahead.
We have tons of resources and this is kind of one of the things that I'm out here again for. I know I saw most of you if, within the last two years. Usually it's every four years I see you. When there's been an election, we come out, do an MPAC one-on-one. I understand as a property owner, I'm sure any of you that are property owners understand as well. Maybe because we're in that little different role, we understand it a little bit differently, but we'll also understand it from the side that it's going to be confusing for property owners. But that's what we're here for. So I'm here to provide you with all of these resources. Municipalities and the finance staff and the clerks departments and the communication staff at the municipalities also have access to these toolkits. We provide webinars, supports to them on a regular basis. Our customer contact center is fully staffed all the time. When there is an update, we do do a little bit of a surge and a hiring of additional staff for the contact center as well. But we're all in this together. We're all in the process at some point. And we are here to support you and what you need. So if there's an additional educational session that you would like me to come out and support property owners with, either now or in the future, whenever that date comes up, we are more than willing to come out, sit down, have a conversation, provide some information about the changes what may or may not be coming. We're here to support whatever a property owners and our municipalities and staff need.
Councillor Ferry and then Councillor, Daewoo then, Councillor Ryle. Go ahead, Councillor Ferry.
Okay, can you hear?
Can you turn your volume up just a little bit, Marie?
Liz, I'm having so much trouble today, you wouldn't believe it. I've been upside down for a bath today. Anyway. Okay, it's volume you haven't got, right?
Yep.
Okay, better now?
Little bit, yeah.
Okay, all right. The question is, I have cases here where something is listed for, say, four million dollars, sells for three point seven and is assessed for seven hundred. And when I get somebody that just built a new place and they're assessed higher and they could only get a million for their place, how do I answer that question?
Thank you through you. I understand totally. Cottage country is a little bit of a different beast than your typical urban residential area. Your sales really drive what those values are going to be come the date we get that valuation. That Insights campaign that I showed, if you go online, you can hover over DICEART or you can hover over Highlands East, whatever you like, and you can look across the province and see where those home values are. I get it. If there's a huge discrepancy between values or the property information is different than what we have, we will look at that and make any corrections that we need to.
So the other thing I was going to ask you about, I guess if you belong to GeoWarehouse, I understand, you can go in there and you can see current market values? Is that right?
I do, I do not know the answer to that. I do not have access to GeoWarehouse.
Okay, well, I think your people provide it. I'm not sure. Anyway, I guess what do I do on these? Like, I'm going to cottage meetings and all of us are. And we get confronted with these horror cases where it sells for three times what somebody with a brand-new house and has just had it appraised and enlisted because a lot of people are selling now because they can't afford to stay in their homes on the lake. And all of a sudden, it's three times, they're paying three times more proportionally than somebody with a three million dollar property. Like, that's not fair. And so what do I tell these people? To appeal it or to call you and get, I mean, this is a bigger problem than I think you realize. It's, I think I've got nine right now that I've, that I've been looking at that have a lot of concern and rightfully so. They're paying twice as much as they should be.
Paying twice as much in property taxes or for their homes?
Yeah, exactly. Some of them are paying nine and ten thousand dollars and these people are paying three or four. Like, that's not fair.
So we have to look at what that property would have been in its state and condition as of January first, two thousand and sixteen, first of all, and compare that at that point in time, which is what the current value assessment does. We then need to look at all of the conditions, the quality, the size, those top five, as well as those other two hundred factors. And we can take a look at each of those. If there's specific scenarios, we're more than happy to take a look at them and make sure that the information's correct. We do need to keep in mind that some of those waterfront properties, depending on the lake you're on, depends on what they're going to sell their property for. We know some of them are more desirable than others. So the values on those lakes are going to drive the sale prices higher as well, which then in turn impacts that current value assessment. So we can certainly sit down, we can chat, we can look at the properties you've got in question. I was with the municipal staff yesterday at DICEART and we sat and had a meeting yesterday morning. And I'd be more than happy to sit down and have a conversation about some of these.
So if the value on, for instance, Kinesis Lake is more, shouldn't that be reflected in the market value? Why is that not market value there when it's market value in Mendon, for instance?
But the sales you're looking at right now are sales that are occurring today, not in two thousand and sixteen. So those sales that are occurring today will likely come into impact when and if that next valuation date is announced. So say, just scenario, I know nothing about a valuation date or an update, no announcement. Say we use a January first, two thousand and twenty-four date. Those sales that you're seeing today will be impacted in that January first, two thousand and twenty-four assessed value. So you're likely going to see our assessed values reach closer to that one or three million dollars that you're seeing them sell for.
Okay, I understand it's a conflict, complicated process, but I just, it's hard to justify the fairness.
We can absolutely sit down and look at the scenarios to make sure that our information is accurate.
Okay, well, I don't think it is, but anyway, that's. I'll leave you there, okay.
Councillor Daewoo?
Thanks very much. Two questions for clarity. The first, based on your video, when you talk about the cost of town services, yeah, in your little infographics, does MPAC use the cost of town services at all in your calculation? Or are you referring exclusively to our calculation of the cost of town services? I wasn't clear on that.
Thank you through you. That calculation is done on your side. We're just using it as an example. But like I've mentioned, we work closely with the municipal finance staff, the clerks departments, the building staff to make sure that what we are realizing what you're budgeting for can be attainable as well. So we know maybe if there's been a loss of a large business in the community, we're going to try and pick up that additional revenue somewhere for you in the new assessment. We're going to target some efforts to that. So we do look at individual case scenarios when we're looking at those numbers.
Okay, but you do, you are considering our costs. So you're relying on us to tell you how much it costs to run the town and you actually use that number in your calculations?
No, no, not at all. Information provided by the building permits and our conversations with municipal staff, how we can direct some of our operations to ensure that we're meeting your needs. So like those numbers I mentioned before, we provide forecasting for each municipality across the province at a lower tier, single tier and upper tier. So I'd mentioned that we've already picked up fifty-five million dollars in new assessment just for two thousand and twenty-four for the County of Halliburton. And that's only thirty-eight percent approximately of what we are targeting as of this date to be picked up before the end of the year. We then communicate those changes to Andrea, for instance, and we have those conversations to make sure they're realizable and attainable. And if we need to, we adjust those numbers throughout the year so that we're on the same page.
Okay. The second question. So again, for clarity, when there is another general assessment done and we're all brought right up to date and presumably a lot of these discrepancies that Councillor Ferry is talking about would be, would be balanced out, if there is something to balance out, they would be, they would sort of be balanced out at that time. I, my assumption is, an increased general assessment of our collective value does not automatically mean an increased tax rate for everyone because it's us who determine that tax rate. So we could, we could keep the tax rate at zero, we could actually lower taxes, we could do whatever we need because it isn't that the increased assessment automatically multiplies everyone's tax bill. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, I think that's really important too for the general public to understand because I completely understand what Councillor Ferry is saying about how there is a discrepancy between this, you know, this property and that property and they need to understand why. I completely get that, but it's not that these are going to exponentially increase when there is a general assessment change. It's up to us completely about that to determine that increase.
Councillor Ryle?
Yeah, the other question I wanted to ask was in relation to the redistribution of the basic load, the tax load itself. We're all comfortable with how the tax nut gets established in the first place between the province, the county and the individual municipalities. We come up with a number or three numbers and then that's distributed in a straight way. When you issue the new values for the property or MPAC does, what Councillor Ferry has said is going to become a real issue. We have two hundred thousand dollar properties that are going to go up fifty percent to three hundred thousand. And so therefore, that number is going to be adjusted. We're also going to have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes that are now going to go to two and three million. All right. So the person who has gone up fifty percent is obviously going to pay less taxes. He has a portion of the nut that they will be responsible for. And the person who now has the larger home is going to pay a whole lot more. Okay, when we talk about it, the individual person doesn't care at all about anybody else except their taxes. As far as they're concerned, their taxes went up. Case closed. It starts and stops right there. So the question that I'm going to ask is, when that happens, the person who owns that expensive home, that three, four million dollar home, that's going to go up a holy doodle amount of money, are they going to get that in one hit? In other words, in two thousand and twenty-three, they're going to be paying something in the tune of, I'm throwing totally hypothetical numbers out there, twenty-five hundred bucks. And now in two thousand and twenty, the following year, they're going to pay ten thousand. That's got to be absolutely ludicrous. Is there going to be a ladder system? It's going to allow those people to. It's going to allow those people to incrementally have their taxes increased over a period of time and significantly going the opposite way. Will the people who have their taxes reduced have them reduced in the same way? Because it, it's going to be, I, I'm going to get telephone calls beyond all understanding, especially from lakefront people who have now got reassessed values. And again, I'm not going to be able to explain them, this, what you've just explained to us. And they're not going to care anyway. They just want to know, why did it go up and how come I'm, how am I going to pay it? So is there going to be an incremental opportunity for them to get? I think the last time it went up twenty-five percent over a four-year period in each of the four years. Is that something we're going to do this time?
Thank you through you, Warden. So at this point, we don't know whether it will be a slow increase like staff. So in 2016 and in 2012, when we did the update, it was phased in over four years. So if you had a valuation date from, so your difference from January first, 2016 to January first, January first, 2012 to 2016, say it increased a hundred thousand dollars in those four years. In 2016, your new value is say two hundred thousand dollars and it was one hundred. That value increase of a hundred thousand dollars was phased in over four years. So you saw a twenty-five percent increase each year in your assessed value. But we need to keep in mind that just because your assessed value has increased way up here, maybe three or four times what it is as of January first, 2016, that tax rate needs to balance that increase. So we're not going to add that same tax rate you're applying today to that new valuation of eight hundred thousand dollars where it's sitting at two fifty today, kind of thing. You're going to actually lower your tax rate based on what your budget to provide the services is.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. I just, I don't like, from a understanding perspective, to say that we're going to lower our tax rate because it, it, we have the same type of process as MPAC has when they're due their assessment standpoint. So first thing we do when a reassessment comes in place, they will, we take into account the increase and we calculate our revenue stream based on that and then apply it to our needs on the expenditure side. So there will be, can be a flat line on, on the tax rate. It could be whatever. Cause I, the reason I want to bring up the thing is we're actually in a revenue deficit over the last eight years because the length of time it's taken, the problem is to realize the fact that we're eight years behind in the assessed values on the property and it hasn't con, it hasn't taken into account the inflation we're paying for our services as well. So it's a balancing act and, 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 and what MPAC is saying is a hundred percent correctly. We do adjust the tax or tape or factor in. We, when we set a tax rate or recommend a tax rate to council, the new revenue we're getting because of the increased assessed value of the properties. So it's just not an automatic, we don't just say to automatically apply this rate and send it out. We look, the revenue coming in is going to be because of the increased assessment based on what our need is. So there, we do, we do factor that in when we recommend the council, when we bring the budget forward.
See, sorry, Councilor Ray.
That, but, and I understand what you're saying. But to be honest, as a taxpayer, I don't understand tax rates. I don't want to understand tax rates. I want to understand the number that's on the bottom of my tax bill. That's the only number that matters to me. And so at the end of the day, when that number moves, this is my question. I, I, I can complicate the whole thing with all of their different calculations, algorithms, and whatever else we want to use to get to whatever number it is we get. But when that number is established, it is going to be significantly higher regardless of how we do it than the number that they are currently paying. If the, the assessed value of the property is significantly different. Is that a fair statement? It has to be because otherwise.
Not necessarily, no.
Well, cost per hundred thousand is going to, is going to, is going to be impacted.
But again, it's, it's like.
I have four hundred thousands than I had before and someone else has less, has a significantly less number of hundred thousands than they had before. So I'm going to pay more. I have to. There's no other way to get the tax bill equally distributed across all of our residents. So if that's the case, my question is still, well, how are we going to incrementally decide how we're going to increase this? Because if we sit down and we tell people they're going to have a one-time increase in their taxes and regardless of what the rate turns out to be of anywhere from three to four thousand dollars, which could double their appropriated percentage of the tax bill. I, I have no, I, I have no way to answer that question. I wouldn't even know where to start. And, and so that's my concern is, is that I don't, I don't know if, if the province or, or MPAC is going to be looking at a way to describe to people who only understand the bottom number on their tax bill, why it went up so much in one year? Or is it going to be appropriated over a four-year period? And I, and I think if we don't do it over a four-year period, I would love to direct all my telephone calls to MPAC because I'm going to have files.
Counselor Carter.
Yeah, I think the, the situation is, is that even if all of the assessments double, if, if we have the same, um, budget number at the, at the, at the county level, if everybody's house just doubled, taxes don't increase. Our problem is, is that not every house is going to go up by the average for the community. And that's where we're going to get the phone calls of why did, you know, my place double and this guy only went up twenty percent? And, uh, you know, this guy went down or, or whatever. And that's, that's where I'm exactly on line with you is one eight hundred MPAC is, uh, you know, where we need to send, send these. And I understand you have staff and so on. And I, look, one hundred percent, we understand that you are not making the decision as to when this magic day will appear and that you are not making the decision of whether it will be phased in over, you know, three years or four years or, or so on. My fear is that, you know, as we approach a, an election year, that no government is going to want to pull the plug on changing this, uh, situation. So we may be going on, on to, you know, we're at eight years. We may be going on to ten plus years before this number comes. And if things, if, if there's a discrepancy in how the, uh, much one house went up over the other, that's where the confusion is going to be. And that's where I think it'll go beyond confusion and directly into chaos. So.
Counselor Sheldon, do you have your hand up? Okay. Any other questions?
Uh, one question I would like is, is to know is, is whether over the last few years, given the change in, uh, in value of properties, um, although, although not necessarily in assessment, have you been getting a lot more requests for, for reconsideration in incrementally over the years?
Thank you. Uh, no. So we have gotten far fewer. Typically, that first one, two years of an assessment update, so 2017, 2018, you see a massive surge because everybody's just got their notices. They're finally seeing there's been a value increase over the last four. But we've seen minute numbers compared to what we do in the first couple of years of an assessment cycle. Typically, the numbers we're seeing now or have any request for reconsideration is legitimately incorrect information we have had. There's been a new owner maybe come in. They've taken a look at their stuff and they're like, that's not right. Or we've gone out and picked up a structure. We have been unable to perform an interior inspection or actually make contact with the owner for any number of reasons. So we're correcting the information based on that. Those are the only requests for reconsideration we're changing right now. And it's less than one percent of a change across the province. And more, we have more, sorry to add to that. We have more what we call a letter A or confirmed assessment notice that we issue than we have in the past as well.
Counselor Dayu.
We could probably be on this topic for all day, honestly, because it is really interesting, uh, as well as being very important for all of us. The, the, if someone tears down their little cottage, three-season plywood, it's been around since nineteen fifty and they build a khataj mahal, like a really big structure in its place. How long does it take be, before the new value hits their, their tax bill? So I, I get completely that you take it down to the 2016 timestamp, completely understand. But would they typically see that changed evaluation within a year or, or does it take a little bit longer than that? Because in a way, I almost wonder if this timestamp actually helps the adjustment process of getting used to the fact that, hey, I've, I've built this huge mansion of a cottage. Taxes are higher because I have done this. Um, before this general valuation comes through and, and, um, kind of rewrites the, the storybook for all of us. So would, would you see those changes within a year?
So we do have a service level agreement, which I mentioned very briefly before, that we have with municipalities that measures it and we have to pick up eighty-five percent within one year occupancy from when that date, whether they've moved in, whether we've received that occupancy date from the municipality.
Okay, one last time. Any more questions or comments? Seeing none? Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, could I have a mover in a second or two receive the delegation? Councillors Carter and Ray.
Be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the presentation from Sarah Groves on behalf of the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation.
All in favor? That's carried. Okay, next on the agenda, planning and environment. Good morning, Ms. Purcell.
Thank you, Warden Danielson. Can you hear me? Um, and good morning, counsel. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions you may have on the planning department update for June, 2024 as, uh, there's nothing particularly of note, uh, that I'd like to highlight at this time, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the report? Tell me your first presentation, you're going to get off that easy. Um, could I then have a mover in a second or two receive the planning department update? Councillors Burton and Fury.
Uh, be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives plan report PLN, uh, one zero, twenty twenty-four entitled Plan Department Update for June, 2024 as information.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next are some proposed amendments to the shoreline tree preservation bylaw. Morning, Alex.
Good morning. Good morning, Warden and members of council. Uh, the staff reports, uh, for you today, uh, for the proposed amendment to bylaw thirty-five oh five is, uh, housekeeping in nature. Bylaw thirty-five oh five or the shoreline tree preservation bylaw was adopted in 2012 and was applicable in all four municipalities. Since its adoption, uh, numerous shoreline-related bylaws have been, uh, since passed. Uh, the proposed amended bylaw would be enforced and effect in the municipality of Daisart at all and removes all references to the other three lower-tier municipalities. Uh, these updates were recommended by the county solicitor to, uh, ensure clarity and to assist with orders, charges and enforcement, uh, in Daisart at all as they relate to the bylaw. Uh, and these administrative amendments, uh, will remove any confusion about applicability when referencing the bylaw. And, um, that is pretty much it. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the amendments made? Hearing none? Could I have a mover in a second or two, uh, receive in, uh, the, uh, report and approve the changes? Counselor Dayu, Counselor McCackney.
Be resolved that council receives staff for, uh, PLN eleven, twenty twenty-four entitled proposed amendment to bylaw thirty-five oh five shoreline tree, shoreline tree preservation. And that staff be directed to present the bylaw for council's consideration.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Uh, nothing under forest conservation or shoreline preservation. So next up is public works. And, uh, first off is good morning, Cell. Um, your public work status report.
Morning, Warden, members of council. Um, my first report is our, um, monthly status report. Uh, one thing that I have to note is, uh, we had a covert, uh, failure on the rail line, um, last week. And we're in the process of, uh, a repair, which should be done by the end of this week. Um, and it's approximately five kilometers north of, uh, Holland Junction Road. And, uh, it didn't, uh, affect the travel port, like, uh, the use of the trail at all. So, yeah, it was all good that way. And I'd be glad to answer any questions in regards to the status reports.
Any questions on the status report? Could I have a mover in a second or two receive it? Counselor Shell and Dayu.
Be resolved that the June, 2024 status report on capital projects, operations and approvals and road maintenance be received for information.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is your pavement marker, markings tender extension.
Correct. Uh, this report is in regards to our, uh, pavement marking, um, opera, uh, maintenance of our county roads. Uh, the county and the municipalities have collaborated for the annual pavement marking tender process. In twenty-three, uh, the county pavement marking tender was awarded to Trillium Pavement Markings, providing a favorable quality work. The county's process allows for contract extensions for contractors providing satisfactory work. Using the Consumer Price Index, the CPI of three point nine percent for twenty-four, staff believes that the CPI provides a reasonable increase for go, from going out to tender. Therefore, recommend the award, uh, of the contract extension to Trillium Pavement Markings for twenty-four. Uh, the county's portion of the extended contract is two thou, two hundred thousand, four hundred and nine dollars, which includes all un, uh, unrecoverable taxes. That is within the twenty-four budget of two thou, two hundred thousand, five hundred, five thousand, sorry. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions on the recommendation? Uh, seeing none? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the report to prove the extension and, uh, bring forward appropriate bylaw? Counselor McCackney, Counselor Ray Hall.
Be resolved that Halliburton County Council received the June twelfth, twenty twenty-four staff report pavement markings twenty twenty-four. And further, the Halliburton County Council approves the contract extension for the supply of a publication of pavement markings to Trillium Pavement Markings. And finally, it staff be directed to present a bylaw to Halliburton County Council authorizing the Warden and Clerk to execute the agreement.
All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Uh, next are, are administrative reports and, uh, the, our year-to-date actuals as of March thirty-first.
Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, provided in my report are the year-to-date actuals as of March thirty-first. I do not have any issues or concerns to bring to council's attention at this time. So happy to answer any questions.
Um, any questions from council? Or comments? Um, hearing none, then could I have a move in a second or two receive the report? Prove it. Counselor McCackney, seconded by Counselor Fury.
Be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the year-to-date actuals as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And further, the year-to-date actuals in March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four are approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Um, okay, we will be moving into closed session. Um, but I think we'll take a, a little bit of a break until maybe ten thirty. Um, could I have a mover in a second or to move into closed? Councillors Carter and Ray.
Uh, be it resolved that county, county council enter into closed session for the following reasons. Uh, be personnel matters, but individ, identifying an individual, including municipal local board employees. Information explicitly is applied in confidence to the municipality or local board, but, uh, by local board. Um, a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial, labor relations information supplied to the conference of municipality uh, and educate, and lastly, education and training.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Ice cream, good. Open session. Um, uh, nothing on the, uh, remaining on the agenda but the bylaws. So I need a mover in a second or, uh, to approve the bylaw to make amendments to the tree preservation bylaw. Councillors Burton and Ferie.
Be resolved that bylaw forty-two fifty being a bylaw to further amend bylaw number thirty-five oh five, the Shoreline Tree Preservation Bylaw, to reflect the area of application in the lower-tier municipality Dicart only be considered, be be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed. Finally passed, sorry.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is the bylaw to extend the agreement for pavement marking. Could I have a mover in a second or, Councillors Carter and Ray?
Be resolved that bylaw forty-two fifty-one being a bylaw to authorize an agreement with Trillium Paving Marking for the twenty twenty-four supply and application of pavement markings on county roads be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
All in favor? Are there any notice of motions? Um, with council's permission, I would like to bring back the discussion about physician recruitment and amending the terms of physician recruitment, uh. If we could, I know we had a discussion with, uh, with Scott at the last meeting and and I've got some thoughts about whether we should be going beyond that or whether we should looking at other, other, uh, professional recruitments. No, not, not now, we're just at at a subsequent meeting. Isn't it? Isn't that the way it works? Um, any opposition to that? Okay, um, could I then have a mover in a second or for the confirming bylaw? Counselor Ray, Counselor Shell.
Be resolved bylaw forty-two fifty-two be violated, confirm the proceedings to the June twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered to be read a first, second and third time.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, a motion to adjourn. Counselor McCaughney, Counselor Burton. Thanks, everyone, there was a lot of material covered today.
Take care of yourself, Murray.
Thank you, Mayor.